To confirm, you're hereby notified that a call workshop meeting with city commissioners will be called and be held at the regular meeting place of the city commission at City Hall 201 North Second Street. The City of Palatka will begin at 4:15 on Wednesday, April 4th, 2018. The purpose of the workshop is our own discussion with representatives of the Small Business Development Center at UNF regarding services provided for the benefit and development of the City of Palatka's business community. Please go yourselves accordingly. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. We're going to ask Vice Mayor Brown if she will lead us in the invocation. And we're going to ask Mr. Malone if he can lead us in the pledge.
Dear most merciful God, thank you for the many, many blessings that you have given us. Give us the knowledge and the wisdom to do the best we can for the most people we can for as long as we can. Guide us, strengthen us, and help us make Palatka and Hutton County, State of Florida, and this country the best that it can be. Amen.
Whoops.
Oh, flag.
Are they still?
Where's the flag out here? Well, we'll do this. We'll go. We're looking out toward the flag.
Please join me in saluting our country. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go call.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown? Go ahead. Mr. Borum?
President.
Mr. Campbell?
President.
Mr. Campbell, here. All members of President's County Department.
Thank you. We'll open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment at this time? If you are, fill out a speaker card in your back. No action will be taken on topic of discussions. All comments will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing no one to close public comment. We're now moving to our agenda. And the only item on the agenda besides our reports is our startup workshop. And we'll talk about SBDC. And we've got three individuals here from SBDC. And so, just so that everyone is aware of why we're here, one of the reasons we're here is just a concern. There was a couple of months ago, we actually talked, Mr. Monahan was here, we talked about really what some of the expectations were of the city as far as reporting, so that we could actually have some empirical data, which puts us in a position where we could have, to really be able to determine the value of the services that are being rendered. Since such time, that information has not been provided to us. There've been a couple of requests for that. And we want to hear from you guys to kind of tell us where you are, what your position is, and how we can find ourselves in a situation where that reporting information is coming to us so that we have some measurables to determine where we are. And so, without any further conversation, we'll turn it over to you guys at this time to maybe give us an update as to where we are.
I had emailed a report to the mayor, Cheryl Lynch, 900 St. Johns Avenue. I had emailed over a copy of the report to the mayor about a few weeks ago, inquiring as to was this all the information requested? The only information that we didn't include was the business starts due to confidentiality. And here we are.
So, please share with the commission what information you shared.
Okay, so from, for the City of Palatka specifically, from 2012 to 2017, there were 477 entrepreneurs consulted. Total consulting hours were 4,162 hours. There were 73 workshops and 178 events. Workshop attendees were 1,019. Event attendees were 5,639. Jobs created were 209. Sales increases, which is information that we collect from an annual survey that is distributed from the state, was $1,790,000. Loans received were $4.4 million. And capital investment was over $5.2 million.
Is that from the city or the county?
That's just city numbers.
How do you delineate where that money is given?
I went through every single consulting session and event that I attended from 2012 to 2017 and calculated it.
What do we have for the past 12 months?
Don't have those specific. It's all cumulative.
Do you annually break down how you provide, what services you've rendered to city citizens or city businesses?
The reports that we usually do are cumulative. I believe Mrs. Monahan suggested that we could easily pull reports just for the City of Palatka. That's not exactly true because the way our reports are pulled are by zip code. And there are certain cities within the City of Palatka zip code that aren't within the city limits. So, it's one of those things where I have to go back in and manually calculate everything. So, it's all calculated on a cumulative basis.
And so, my, I guess my concern again is, we are sending checks on a quarterly basis contingent upon certain things being in place. One, there was supposed to be a contract put in place, which was never finalized and never put into place as it relates to services and expectations for the city. Secondly, if we're talking about providing services to the city, and when I run, when I look at the numbers that were out there historically, what we're finding is the city's paying $20,000 a year for SBDC services. And I would say for funding towards SBDC, being present in this community. The county has, which is much larger, is only paying $12,000. And we understand that there was a deficit in place. And I think the commission was interested in trying to assist in supporting that deficit. The chamber also had some skin in the game at that point, and they subsequently pulled out for whatever reasons. So, the chamber's no longer a part of the equation. And so, and what we found historically when reports came forward during the meetings is that all the data that was given to us in meetings only related to county. It didn't relate to the city. There was no breakdown. We were consistently told that you were unable to provide a breakdown at that point. We've also been told that you were unable to provide certain statistical data based on violations of privacy rights. And so, tell me specifically what privacy rights are violated by you providing data such as that, which you provided on a quarterly basis? That's right, you can come up. I want to, we're not totally formally here today. There we are. And so, I ask for an authority as to where we were and what privacy rights were violated by providing statistical data, not names, not business name or any other stuff. And what I got was, my response, what was the legal authority? And the answer was the Small Business Administration. So, again, I'll ask for that information again. Just for the record, can you state your name and address?
Sure. Janice Donaldson, 120001 Lundy Drive, Jacksonville, Florida. Thank you, Mayor, for having us here today. I'm the Regional Director of the Florida SBDC at UNF. We cover 18 counties in northeast Florida. I have been with the SBDC for 36 years, not always in this capacity, but at least the past 16 years in this capacity. And so, just to address a couple of the concerns, we are a little more challenged in a rural county than we are in an urban county with the city definition. So, we have a very robust management information system where I can run all data by the city. So, I can put in Putnam County and run county data. I can put in City of Palatka and run city data. And as Cheryl explained, there might be some zip codes that are outside the, you know, county area. But whatever's qualified in our MIS system as the City of Palatka, I can run that. And that would give figures like capital access, sales increase, business starts, jobs created and retained. All of that economic impact is reported by the client. So, we are not allowed to extrapolate data and, you know, that kind of thing. When Cheryl has a client and they come into her office and they ask for assistance with a loan package, they want to go for a loan to the bank. And then they call her a month later and say, hey, that loan package really helped me. I went to the bank, I got a loan. And she'll say, well, thank you. Was I helpful in you getting the loan? Oh, yes, you were very helpful, you know, big player in my getting the loan. She has a form that she actually sends the client. It's called a verification and attribution form, where the client has to say, I got this loan, I created one job or two jobs or how many, and it was only because of the assistance of the SBDC, and they have to sign it. We cannot count impact unless we have verification and attribution. The other way we capture our impact is through an annual statewide survey sent out from our state office, where it has the same wording, as a direct result of assistance provided from the SBDC, I was able to generate this economic impact. So, we're very careful about counting data unless it's been attributed and verified by a client. So, we can run consulting hours, number of clients, the kind of data that Cheryl just went over by the City of Palatka from our management information system. We are not allowed confidentiality. We have a federal contract. The minimum cash match for Putnam County Palatka to have a full-service office is $32,000. The cost of a full-service office is $108,000. So, the city and county combined put in $32,000, which is the minimum cash match for a full-time office. And then the state and federal money that the SBDC invests is over $75,000. So, you're really paying a little less than two-thirds of the cost of an office.
Paying one-third.
Yeah, paying a little less than one-third, and we're putting in the two-thirds for the cost of the office.
We're putting in the two-thirds, right?
We're putting in the third-third.
I thought it's 32,000, we're putting in 20?
You're putting in, oh, of the 32,000, yes. The cash match. So, the, the cost of a full-time SBDC, you're putting in, the county and the city together are putting in about a third, a little less than a third. Yeah. So, what happens is, what we try to do with counties and cities is partner. So, we think of the county and city as a partner in dividing, in providing full service services in a county. So, we have this same kind of arrangement, they put in actually a little more money, but we have the same kind of arrangement with St. John's County, Nassau County, Marion County, and Duval County, where there's the city and/or county put in some share of the money needed for a full-service office. Prior to having, 2012, prior to having a full-term time office, we still cover Putnam County. So, for the 30, 40 years that we've had a center and we've covered Putnam County, we had a consultant that would come here once a month and meet with clients. So, without the full-service office, we would still serve Putnam County, it would just be on a much less frequent basis.
Every time I've seen a partnership, every partnership that I've drawn up has had full disclosure in there. And so, is there, so is there a way for you to get a release from clients to provide the data necessary for?
Yes.
Have you been doing that?
We have. And what we do is we try to do success stories. And there's a release form which the client signs. It says you can release my name, you can say you worked with me, you can, you know, talk about how you helped me and all that kind of thing. But the client has to be willing to sign that. We cannot force them to sign.
I understand that, but why has there been so much resistance to providing the data to the city? And it's taken, you know, months. We're, we're months into this thing.
And can you explain exactly what data?
We've asked for, we've asked specifically, and Kevin's sat right there, Cheryl sat there before, and we asked specifically for the data that we've been provided. The first time I ever heard anything close to data that comes up to talking about what's going on in the City of Palatka gives me numbers from 2012 to now. And to give me cumulative numbers from 2012 to now doesn't tell me if there's a decline in the number of people using the services over the course of a six-year period, that tells me if there's a glee in whether those services are being used. It's not telling me what areas that we're seeing the most interest in the service, in the services that are being used. It's not telling me if there is a deficit and there needs to be additional funding in order to fund all those people. So, you gave me bare-bones numbers and really no support. And so, if we've got people there to sign the releases and saying, hey, this is what's going on, then why aren't we sending that information so that we can now look at it and make an informed decision as to where we fund, if we fund, and at what levels we fund, or if there's some other areas of concentration that we need to provide additional support for, or make some adjustments from our side to make sure that we deal with some of those things from a policy standpoint. But if you're not providing the information and all you're doing is getting a check and you come when you feel like it, then it doesn't, it changes the game. And so, my thing is, it just needs to be some level of openness and some level of communication, which is comfortable for both sides. Because if it's a partnership, then I would think that the partners are communicating and disclosing this information so that the relationship continues to grow over the years, as opposed to be a situation where we got to call a meeting just so we can get what we've been asking for.
So, just to reiterate, if I were to provide you with the same type of information that Cheryl reviewed, that she did for aggregate numbers 2012 through 2017, if I did that for each year, 2012, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17?
Wouldn't be enough.
So, what would we be missing?
We would need quarterly reports, just like you get quarterly checks, which tell me where we are. There's a breakdown of industry. There's probably more information than I need than we can discuss in this meeting during the time allotted. But I would want to see quarterly reports. I would just want to see a breakdown of industry. I would want to see what the funding levels are. Are there any follow-ups to the businesses once they've gotten started? So, I, to give you an example, I spoke to a business owner who started a trucking company. A young man had never started a business before. He got funded at a certain level from one known financial. But he says he hasn't been able to get any follow-up support. He's never started a business. He helped, he had helped develop in his business plan, he was happy with all that stuff. Now, he's at a point where it's implementation, and he's saying he feels like he's kind of out there. And so, that may be his, just his perception. But again, perception is reality for a lot of people. And so, getting someone along to start a business is great. Putting them in a position to sustain the business is wonderful. And so, sometimes there may be some additional follow-ups. There may be some additional direction that you can send them to other agencies that may be able to help them out along the way. I don't know, but he's saying that, you know, I just had this conversation a couple of days ago, the young man is saying that they need additional help, and they can't get anyone since they've already been approved for the loan. And the loan was a great catalyst to getting their business started. The help with the business plan was great, but they need additional work. And I know there had been talk of virtual incubation. Under that incubation concept, it's, you help that person as they grow the business as well. And so, I, I'm not going to say that he's absolutely correct, but what I will say is, this is the perception that was relayed to me. And I, and I know that he didn't have any of that business background before, but he's just someone who's trying to get a fresh start. And so, those are some of the things that are out there. I would love to see the follow-up surveys to, to see, you know, if we meet, because if it's a collaborative effort, I don't, you know, at least let it say, hey, maybe this is something else that you can ask that'll help us out. It sends us a partnership. And those are, but there has to be dialogue. It can't be, I mean, because we found out from everybody else that the office moved. And the only way I found out is because I sent the young man down there, the same person I'm speaking of. So, when the office moved to the chamber, and there wasn't a memo sent to the city, there wasn't a phone call, I found out, just like everyone else did. You know, just so happened, we sent a business person down there who wanted to get started. And they were like, well, Ms. Lynch is no longer the chamber. And so, that's how we found out. And, and that's not the way you communicate.
Well, I do want to thank Commissioner Borum and Commissioner McCaskill and Vice Mayor Brown for coming to the grand opening of the new offices and the welcome center. We appreciate that very much. And, you know, I, what I want to make sure that I convey is that, there are a couple of things that you mentioned, Mayor, that I want to make sure are clear. We are a federally funded program, so we have a contract with the U.S. Small Business Administration. And we're a part of a state network. So, we have deliverables that are given to us by our state office, and we have a subcontract with that state office to provide SBDC services in our region, our 18-county region. And our goals are that we spend 12% of our consulting hours with pre-ventures, people thinking of starting a business. 25% of our consulting hours with startups, people just like the gentleman you just mentioned, who've been in business between one day and three years. And 63% of our consulting hours with growing existing businesses in business more than three years. So, our focus is exactly what you described. It's providing support to people who have already started, to actual business owners, to help them succeed, because it's been proven that existing business owners create more economic impact necessarily than people who are thinking about starting a business. So, that's why we, you know, focus on that. In addition, I would say that Cheryl Lynch is one of our top performers. She generates the most consulting hours. She has one of the highest customer satisfaction rates of any of our consultants in the network. And we measure consulting, if you come to an appointment, you get an evaluation card the first time you come. If you attend a workshop, you get an evaluation form that says, did you like it? What else could we provide? And then every year, we send an annual survey to anyone who received an hour of consulting over the last two years that says, were you satisfied with what you got? So, we're very bullish on collecting data on whether or not our customers are satisfied. I mean, we think that's a very important part.
And just a clarification, not only are you a federally funded company, you're also municipally funded.
Yes, federally, state, and local.
Right. And so, I, I think that there's, and I just think that the lines of communication should be different. Commissioner Borum, I know you had something we wanted to say.
Yeah, I just wanted, just from your MIS, your database system, is there any way that you can extract the data? And you, you cannot query the particular business name and share some of that information, maybe?
Oh, what kind of information?
Well, some of the breakdown information, like hours, hours of service provided, the number of awards or whatever as it relates, but you don't have to put, can it be, you replace the name of the business maybe with an identifier that you guys can reference to know number 1, 2, 3, 4 is business ABC?
Well, normally what we do is we, we can run by a number of parameters. We can look at industry, and that's something the mayor mentioned, is you'd like to know the breakdown by industry, which I think Cheryl included, ag, construction, manufacturing, hospitality, retail, other services. We can do it by industry, we can do it by size of business, number of employees, sales range, you know, things like that. Race or ethnicity, we can pull by in-business, not-in-business. You know, so there's a lot of data that we could pull.
Without giving, you know, without giving the name of the company, you can replace the name of the company maybe with a number that you cross-reference to say, okay, if I extrapolate, and then you can do the breakdowns of, all right, by year, by quarter, or whatever, and all of that information can be there. Now, if you ran those numbers, would they match up to what's being reported?
Yes, I think they would.
Well, I'm just, well, I'm just saying, based on what's in the data set.
I'll tell you what's different is, like, on the top line of this, it says entrepreneurs consulted, 477. When we ran this report, we ran for 2012 through 2017. So, these are 477 distinct customers. They're not people that came, you know, they could have come in once, they could have come in 25 times over this time period. But they're only counted as a distinct customer once. So, if you ran year by year, it's not going to add up to 477, because each one will count the distinct customers. So, things like that, the hours would be, should add up, the event should add up, you know, the attendees probably would add up, but the distinct clients who might have over that one back, just from year to year. I mean, it would, more than likely, it would come up to more than this, rather than less.
Well, you're, you're, the distinct customer is all of your people who are unique, those are unique instances. But just say, for instance, if you have a particular customer who are awarded a number of hours or over a period of time, you can break down the data in a way to where you can see if certain customers are being awarded more than others in time or in amounts or whatever, and the frequency of that, if you look at it by quarter or whatever. Those are the kind of things I think are important.
Well, I mean, there's no cost to use our services. So, if you come in once and you decide you don't want to come back, that's one time. If you say, I need more help and I want to schedule an appointment every week for the next six months, you could do that. I mean, you know, as long as you were, you know, if you were supposed to be writing pieces of your business plan or doing certain things, that you could do those in that time frame. So, there's no real restriction on how many hours we can see somebody. You know what I'm saying?
But the data, but the data can point to certain things. Now, if you're staying a lot with maybe one or two clients and you've got other clients who need to get in and be able to be serviced or assisted, those are the kind of things that the data will provide us information in, in terms of, are we really providing the services to the people who really need those services? So, I think that's important.
Vice Mayor?
I guess I got a little different way of looking at what's being done, because I looked at boots on the ground for, for what? I know when you, because I got so bad one time with the, not this boot is cheap, but the other one. She said we had the third highest crime thing in the state per capita. And I'm going, what? Have you turned it on the TV to listen to what's going on in Jacksonville and those other places? My journey with this started in 1985. I'll give you a little history, because this is what I did with them. I went to a meeting, came back with the idea for business incubator. The city started letting me travel around to several, to see exactly what they do. And then the rural health group that I was on had people on there that were from different agencies that we worked with in different cities. And above one so much with USDA, he came and brought three people here, and he asked us, what do you need? We said jobs. He said, okay. He sent somebody, he said, do you all have anybody who could go in and clean houses, yards, paint, fix stuff? At the time, the housing authority had them. And they, we said, yes. He got with, with Mr. Shepherd, and they came in and showed them how to write government contracts. So, they went in with USDA and cleaned houses, painted, fixed yards. That gave a person a business, and it gave people, a number of people, jobs. And it worked really well for a couple of years, because the housing authority carried them, and they made the paperwork for them. We need downtown, when we look at downtown, or when we have our young people come here, I had two grandchildren come here, they had to move to Jacksonville to get a job. And the state has taken jobs away from us, children and family services, and put them somewhere else. When we invest money in trying to help start businesses, we want businesses to start here. We want to see them, and we want to know what they are so we can support them. And to me, we haven't really seen that type of thing. And I know with grants, you got special stuff you have to do. And I came in and sat down with you, and we talked about doing the business incubator. You told us that you could not do the business incubator for us, because I was going to say, can we pass it to you to do? You said you all could help us with that. We, we still have that on our priority list. But what we need is somebody sometimes that not only needs it to a bank loan, but our folks need their hands here just a little bit longer. And maybe we need to find another source to go along with her or something, because having your own business, people think it's fun, it's not. It's, it's a, the math will tell you that. There are jobs you, you put in, Rufus got his own head, has another head of business too. I don't know if these other people did too, but we in pretty much a few years with my business. And I would, the thing we need is that, to me, this money pay, pay off. It needs to be multiplying itself, returning in our community. And I've been asking Sharon and whoever else was here, I brought all the information about the business incubator about years ago, and they, the guy that was there, that famous name was Mueller, he was probably before you. He just brought a bunch of stuff and blocked that on us and told us, that's what we had to do, and that's not what we need. We need to find a way to help people not only get into business or get a loan, but how to... but how to keep it and keep it going. And somehow, that's what's important to me. Seeing a bunch of stuff sometime on paper is great. But if I don't see it out there, and not just on the downtown Palacca, we've got spaces and people doing home businesses all over the place. So that's my concern.
Mr. Holmes.
Maybe I can add a little comment if I could. The city's used to having its numbers, its claims, its expenditures, its income audit. Interesting topic because I guess our auditor's going to be here in the next couple of weeks. And they're going to spend a couple of weeks checking over our numbers and verifying. They don't just accept what we say and nothing. And I think it would help as the city commission determines how best to apply their dollars to help the local community, if they could judge results. And I think that's what the mayor's been trying to get to, is judging results. So for instance, I heard the number a minute ago of 202 jobs. I don't know how you, how that number... I don't know what the context of that number was. I understand it's more timeframe of 2012 through 2017. I understand that theoretically, it's supposed to be primarily for the city of Palacca. But I don't understand if that's supposed to be jobs created as a direct result under services? Is that what it is?
Yes.
So for instance, when you tell me you guys created 40 jobs a year inside the city of Palacca, my first reaction is, "Really?" I've got a pretty good pulse on this community. I've been here a long time and I'm pretty active in it. If you take out the box stores, which I don't, which I assume don't use your services, the Lowe's and the Home Depots and so forth, 40 jobs a year coming in downtown the state or coming into the city? That number sounds... It's... I'm sorry? Yeah, it doesn't sound real. I'll just be, just be straight with it. So when the mayor said, "Give us some, you know, give us some verification. Tell us who, where'd you create the 40 jobs, for instance?" And you guys say, "Can't tell you that." Well, I mean, that's... When you go get a bank loan and you, and the guy says, or the bank officer says, "Well, how much do you make a year? Can you afford this?" And you say, "I make $400,000 a year." Do they take your word for it? Haven't seen that lately. So I guess that's where they were getting to, is how do we, how do they verify the information that you're giving? I mean, maybe I'm wrong. And if I am, say so, but I think that's what they're looking at.
Well, I can tell you that the jobs that we report are verified and attributed either in an annual survey or directly from our clients. And I guess the bottom line is, we cannot tell you who created those jobs.
Unless you get a release.
Unless we get a release.
But are you asking for a release?
Not from every client, no.
So this is a question. So, and so I'll let Mr. Folsom talk and then I'll... So I'll see.
I have a list of questions. So you're going to have to educate me because I'm a new person. I would prefer, though, that Cheryl answer these instead of you, though.
Sure.
Because I, first of all, and it's no knock on you guys. In the future, I would prefer if you're going to bring data that you bring enough copies for everybody on the highest and the clerk. To give us numbers from off a piece of paper that owner you see. The citizens don't have a chance to look at it. We don't have a chance to look at it. It really makes the conversation difficult to handle. Just in terms of what I picked up, I'm very curious to how requests for information before were not adhered to and not readily given. But today, all the information that we need is already there. And it just needs to be clicked on and printed out and sent. So I'm not sure how today...
Well, it's not that simple. It can't just be clicked on. It has to be analyzed and reviewed again because you asked for City of Palacca specifics. So I'd have to go and review all the data to make sure. And it's very time-consuming. It took me over 14 hours to put this information together. And it was put together cumulatively. I had previously gave the information to the mayor and said, "Is this the information you were looking for?"
You gave the information to me on March 16th in an email only after the check didn't come. So it's not as if you gave this information up readily.
I had requested to have a meeting with you three times prior to discuss the information.
Cheryl, I've been asking for this information. A lot longer than that.
So we've been asking for a calendar year for you to come in and provide this information. Don't come in here today and say that you gave this information and you were the one requesting. We were requesting. That's why Kevin came here. And so the thing was, you were absent. And because you were absent and we weren't getting any answers, we started making requests. So the fact that you finally responded is not the same as you asked for a meeting. We've been asking for this meeting for a year.
I was trying to verify because I was not at the meeting.
How can you verify something that's been given to you four or five times every time you come to a CRA meeting or a commission meeting? You get the same question. And it had been going on and on. And it's just the fact that you sit in here and have the audacity to sit down and say that you openly provided this information is really going to... It's almost disturbing to me because you sent it in an email on March 16th only because your check didn't come. But you... And so the reality is, you've been... The check was requested. The check was requested and the data was continually requested. We asked for a meeting with Ms. Donaldson when Matt Reynolds was here. It was never put into place. I sat next to Matt and watched him make the phone call and ask for the meeting. And it didn't happen on more than one occasion. And now we come in, once the check wasn't here, and all of a sudden, there was a red alert because the county was trying to pull out and because the chamber had already pulled out. I mean, come on, don't do that. All these other folks pulled out. The city's been with you the whole time. We want to be a partner. But we don't want to be a partner that's been neglected. Because at the end of the day, we understand you get federal funding. And that's great that the federal funding takes up... The federal and state funding gives you two-thirds of what you get. But you also get this other funding. When you came in and you made the ask because you said we were not getting the money, we were getting it from everyone else, we upped the ante without question because it's a priority for us. But you didn't make us a priority. And so again, and you lobbied everybody but... You lobbied everybody but the people who actually gave the answer. And so for me, until you open the lines of communication and there's actually some level of respect that comes along with the communication and the way that it comes about, then there's really not much need to sit down and talk if we're not going to have open and honest communication because the relationship right now is almost tarnished, as far as I'm concerned. For me, all I want is empirical data and an open dialogue which allows us to be accountable for the money that's being sent out. And we may not be that other $60-something thousand that you're looking for, that $78,000. But we are a fraction of what's in place. And as a fraction of what's in place, that's fine. The reality is, is if we're getting the services that we need and the answers are coming and the jobs are coming and we can verify and justify, it may be more than $20,000. But when the attitude is that we're going to come in here and act like you're the one that made the request, that ain't happening. I mean, I just don't even see how you can sit there and honestly say that you're the one that made the request.
That was my point. I tried to follow up with you to get specific information.
Did you try to follow up with Matt Reynolds when he was calling?
I have emails to Matt Reynolds as well.
You got one email to me and it came on March 16th, months after the check didn't come.
There were a couple of emails back in January and February. And I also called you and texted your personal cellphone. And it was during the time that you had lost your father.
Look, ma'am, I, let me tell you. I've been asking for this for...
For years.
Right, for years. And I don't see the information. And I think Campbell, after he echoed me, right, Campbell?
We've all asked for a report.
And then all of us...
If we're not going to be honest, there's no need to talk.
I provided a quarterly report and you've asked for specific business starts for the city of Palacca. And I said, "I can't share that because it would violate the confidentiality because it'd be two, or one, or three." You have a business tax receipt system to notify you of how many businesses have started within your city system. So you could identify, therefore violating the confidentiality that extended within the Small Business Act that we have to follow.
We asked for specific data, asked you the city for just business starts?
Yeah, for Palacca.
All services, cumulative services, right? In totality, all services that were provided by the citizens.
But to defend, we have information for you. We did go back and give you additional numbers. We plan on giving you additional numbers. And it's not related to just jobs.
You planned on giving it to us? When did you plan on giving it to us?
We just gave you some numbers.
Yeah, we asked for them well over six months ago.
Those were the same numbers that you gave us the last time?
We asked, we've been asking for this since I've been on the commission. I mean, you can't...
And then the other thing, too, is we are a small town and everybody knows us. And they come to my house and they want information. And I tell them, "If you want to know where to find resources, go to Cheryl at the chamber." I had some of them that bumped into me. I'll come back and say, "I didn't get help." Well, some of them I know needed more help than what you were authorized to give them. But there were some that they felt like it wasn't... They didn't get enough and they could have gone forward with it. And that's what bothers me because you really want to help people. We don't sit up here... They don't pay us big dollars to sit up here. And we put in a lot of hours, not only just in here, but all over the community. And all of us got a house. And all of us know people that they come to after hours. And if you don't do something wrong, they're going to come back and complain. If I have some way to defend you, that's one thing. If I don't have any way to defend you, then I'm going to soon say, "Well, I don't know where you can go or I need to see you somewhere." And that doesn't help any of us.
I got... I got more than one business in the city of Palacca. And I had a business that started up in 2016 with 13 other units inside of that building. And I've gone around and asked every tenant that I have, have they ever gotten anything from the Small Business Development Center? And they haven't gotten one thing. I've never seen anything that came from SBDC in the 18 years that I've been with the city. So if we go from 2012 to 17, I still haven't got it. And I know for a fact that I sat in a meeting and I asked you if you communicated with all the businesses in the city of Palacca. And it still hasn't come. And I'm sure if I do a survey again of my tenants, it's going to be the same answer. Startup businesses, opportunities to educate, opportunities to help some folks. The communication isn't there. And that's one of the concerns. I mean, you give me thousands of hours of workshops. I'm sure maybe even I could benefit from those workshops. At least I know some of my tenants could. But if these businesses who are starting up with new locations are not being privy to what information that you have and the wealth of experience and knowledge, because I hear wonderful things about the stuff that you do, but they're not privy to it. And it almost doesn't injustice for there to be one or two people in getting the information when you could have a room full of folks who can gather the information that you have and benefit from it. And it may be an opportunity to expand on what's already invested, to do more because the results are showing more. But if you're not getting what you're asking for, it's real hard to cut a bigger check for a bigger check when you don't even get the respect to just get the basics. We can't even get the contract. I mean, it's all those different things. If you can't formalize the agreement and the relationship, then how can we expect the rest of that stuff?
I'm sorry, but I would have to beg you differ on that. The MOU was sent over a month ago to Matt. The draft MOU, we sent one to the county and one to the city. And I've never heard anything back.
Matt hadn't been here in a month.
He sent my email?
It was over that because he responded that he received it. So October of last year, we started the conversation. So I mean, I have a copy of it right here.
Vincent, do you have a copy of it?
Yeah.
See, I've seen it.
And there's been, and there has been communication back and forth. And I know Matt has been communicating back, communicating back and forth before he left as to try to, as to how to get the terms in place.
Am I clear?
There hasn't been clear communication. And so we can talk about it over and over and over again. But at the end of the day, what's the solution? What's the solution? Because I'm frustrated with the ask. It makes no sense for us to be sitting in this meeting going over bases. If you're going to accept the check, then at least be responsible enough to provide the information and don't hide behind privacy because you don't have to. You can ask people. And I know from me, when I started my business, I wanted everybody in the world to know that I was open so that I could get some business. And I'm pretty sure that some of those new business owners wouldn't have a problem coming and standing in front of that camera and saying, "Hey, I started my business. Cheryl Lynch helped me. She educated me. I went to the Small Business Development Center. And they were able to give me the information necessary for me to start. And this is my location and this is the service that I provide in this community. And I'm hoping that you guys will come out and support me."
We can certainly ask every business start. You know, we do ribbon cuttings with business starts and success stories. And we can certainly ask if they would be willing for us to release that data. I mean, that would be no problem at all. I would say that with growing businesses, you know, part of the reason that businesses trust us is because they know that their data is confidential and that we don't release their names to anybody. So whether or not you, as an existing business owner, would want people to know that you were having cash flow issues and that you made an appointment to talk to someone to help you with the challenges you were experiencing, that might be a different story.
When we started a conversation about privacy, the one thing we said, we don't, we didn't care about the name. We cared about the service that was provided and being able to verify. If you got to redact, whatever. We cared about the service that was provided and being able to verify if you gotta redact whatever. But there has to be something to be able to show that we are there if we did a, if there's an opportunity for a small, an audit of services to be able to say, "Hey, here's some of the folks, they've agreed to release information. I can show you what they've done, here are the results from this last quarter." And if you're collecting that data to be able to provide a cumulative report from 12 to 17, you obviously had to go through quarterly reports or monthly reports or daily, whatever that is. But to be able to put something together and say, "Hey, one of our partners, we're gonna send this information over and let them know exactly what happened and what the benefit is." Because now we can say, okay, we're not, we've got a slow run in the second quarter. Or there's something else that needs to be done. Or we're seeing an overflow of businesses that are coming to Palacca in this particular category. But without anything and someone slapping numbers together because the check ain't come, it changes it. And that's just the reality of what's going on. There's scrutiny coming in from three different entities at this point. The county, the city, and the chamber. So obviously, there's a, there's, there's some chink in the armor. And, and until we fix that portion of this, because it's not just us, we're not the only ones here. Unfortunately, they just giving us the lead and they're waiting to see how the relationship works with us. We want to see you succeed because it's all of us succeeding. But we also want to be included. If you move, let us know. Palacca's not that big, we're right down the street. If you need help, let us know. If you're having a workshop, let us know, we can put it on the website. We can put it on our social media. Because I'm sure we can reach more people than she can.
Absolutely. And I've said that's a struggle getting the word out.
But it's a struggle if you're trying to be an island. It's not a struggle if you're trying to be a partner. Help is right here and it's teamwork. Ms. Brown constantly says, "Together, we're better." But we're operating separately. And the frustration is that we've been asking, and it's not until today that there's been at least some decency to come in and say, "Hey, this is what we've got." And that didn't happen just out of the blue. And it's just, and I'm frustrated because we're sitting here acting like it was some, you know, it was, it was someone that took the initiative. It wasn't. It's because everything was falling apart. And it didn't have to. Because we took the lead. And I think in taking the lead, when everyone else pulled back, we should at least have been respected enough to have a communication that was open and honest, not this. Because this is disrespectful.
You know, I think as part of the last communication or prior to that, you know, we talked about the number of businesses that are located inside the city limits of Palacca. And it, and there's not that many inside the city limits of Palacca in terms of reaching out to those businesses, whether they've been by mail or, or whatever, um, that we thought we were gonna get some mailers out to. And I don't know if that happened or not. That, that was one of the initiatives. So I, I, I think there's opportunity for us to provide the services that people need, whether they're startup or where they're already in business. And again, you do have people who, um, don't, they have the, the skill set, but they don't have every component that it needs to run a business, the marketing. They might not have the financials. But you, you know it, your organization knows it. So I think we're missing, we're missing a major piece. And we got a, I know of a struggling company right now that had, hadn't been here long, that they are very, very good at what they do. But they are missing some key components that they could use some of your services. So I think if we reach out to those, um, people by mailers or by whatever, um, that would be a great, great assistance.
I, I appreciate the suggestion, Rufus. And the thing that I have tried to do is I've canvassed the community twice with no results. I sat in the office when Pam was still here and stuffed envelopes with a mailer to all the business tax receipt recipients. Minimal response from that. I'm open to suggestions. I've always said that it's a struggle to get the word out. We don't have the funding to do mailers to the whole community and, and mail out to organizations. That's just not part of our budget and what we do. We're operating, our services are at no cost. So we have to be creative in what we do. Word of mouth has been the best avenue.
And at what point have you reached out to let us know that? I mean, when you, you reach out and you, you try and you struggle, when are you allowing us to help you out and let us know that? And that's basically what we're...
When I report quarterly, I remember the mayor said something about...
You've been reporting quarterly?
Yes.
Enjoy it.
Every, every, every quarter, either myself or a representative of the SBDC comes every quarter.
You don't even come every quarter.
I'm so confused. If there's no meeting and the meeting is canceled like it was in February, I wasn't able to produce the numbers. If you would like them to be emailed and then at such time, we can discuss them in an open forum, I'd be happy to do that. But if there is no meeting held, I can't come. But the original arrangement was to come on a quarterly basis, that's how our reports are produced. So the February meeting was canceled to have a different type of meeting. So I couldn't come to let you know what the year-end numbers were for the last quarter.
Why didn't you email it?
Exactly.
You emailed me this report? What? That seemed to be the preferred way of communication. You emailed a report, the cumulative report, why didn't you email the quarterly report?
I can do that.
Why didn't you?
Because that wasn't how the, the procedure had been done in the past. If the meeting didn't happen at the next scheduled meeting, I would come and present. If we want to change the way procedure is, that's great.
So she emailed these results the sixteenth, you said?
March sixteenth.
March sixteenth. But that was prior to this meeting.
I had emailed the numbers to the mayor.
This meeting was probably formalized a week ago.
To, to...
But you'd already taken the results.
To inquire if this was the information. I was looking for verification if what was requested, because I wasn't at the meeting, was everything that that was asked for. And that's when the meeting was requested. But previously, I had tried to get the information and sit down and have a conversation, say, "Okay, what is it that you're looking for, how do you want it reported?" So that's why I did a cumulative one.
I'm gonna ask you, okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. Commissioner Campbell, then you can... All right, I've really tried to sit back and not say anything. Um, and I'm the, I'm the one, like, where do we go from here? Our request has been made plain. If it's something that you can adhere to, we would, for me, I would love for it to happen. Um, I, the frustration that the mayor is feeling and everyone else, I am too feeling the same way. But where do we go from here is the ultimate question. And I think we have to distinguish what it is that we want. And if you can't do it, what can be done to get us as close to the information that we are requesting? Because like Ms. Mary said, there have been several meetings that I know, she requested it, I requested it, as well as everyone else. And right now, I just feel like, you know, nothing has been done, honestly. And we can't leave here today not knowing if we're gonna have to come back to a meeting just like this in the next couple of months, only to receive information that, you know, we're requesting. You know, it was kind of like we were forced, we had to put our hand down to force you all to come and provide us at least what we have today. So once again, I think we need to clearly identify what it is that we are requesting from the city, which I know is already out there. But let's leave here on a common ground of knowing that our request can be made.
Mr., Mr., Mr. Foster?
Because I had to come up here for a reason. So we got a good, healthy conversation out of it. Uh, well, I, I will say this, I would agree with Commissioner Campbell. I want us to move forward, um, because I don't think my questions are gonna help, honestly. Because from what I've just heard in this meeting, you and Janice are not even on the same page. Because there are things that Janice got up here and said, you came right back and said, "No, it don't work like that." I'm telling you now, y'all are not on the same page. And I think there's just such a rift. And we need the data. I think one of the things is if we move forward, if we're moving forward, you send out that data in advance, you email it to us, if we have a meeting or don't have a meeting. And to go to your point, if we cancel the meeting, you show up to the next meeting. You're contacting Vesa to get on the agenda to speak to us. Now, from a call standpoint, for me, I'm looking at the numbers that you gave me. And you gave us two hundred and two jobs or was it two hundred and nine?
Two hundred and nine jobs created or retained.
How many were retained, how many were created?
I'll have to go back and verify.
Because when that number was thrown out there the first time, that, that caveat wasn't there. Just so you know.
Just said, we haven't created.
It was just created, it wasn't created and retained. So we, we, we're gonna get down to that level of special sympathy, I tell you that now. Because when I take two hundred and nine divided by sixty months, that's three point six jobs created or retained. Average over a five-year period. When I take your four twenty-seven, it was four twenty-seven since 2012, right? I take that and I divide that out, we're talking seventy-one a year, five point nine a month. Uh, and you guys are saying that's new people coming in. But then you said later on that you sent out mailers and you got minimal response.
That was years ago.
So what are we doing now? Because the numbers on average appear to not be getting better. But the mayor's point, if we don't get the data broken out on a quarterly or annual basis, how, it's hard for us to determine whether or not our dollars are really beneficial to the citizens of Palacca. And that's what I'm gonna be looking at. And then I'll tell you this, uh, my father said something powerful and I'll leave it here, you don't have to answer tonight. Any organization, your true worth is how would the community feel if you were gone? So if my commission decides to not spend any more money with you, what would that impact be to us? And from what I'm saying tonight, you can't tell me that, and that's troubling to me. Uh, with the kind of money that we're spending, that's troubling that you can't tell me if y'all left tomorrow, what would that true impact be for the business owners in our community? Um, and that's a challenge when you've been in, in business for this long. Another challenge for me is the fact that communication is paramount, it's fundamental to having any type of partnership, whether it's with you and a man or a woman, you and any entity, communication is key. And so today, reason why I say, another reason why you guys are not on the same page, Janice just did so adequately and, and made it appear as though all these things they've been asking for are easily obtainable. That's the impression you gave me, based on the notes I got. And I'm talking about to such degree that it's easily attainable, it just, it, I handle things a little differently. But I'm telling you, on the inside, I'm thinking like, what in the world's going on there? Why are we sitting here if it's that easily to be obtained? Because you inferred to me then that you just don't wanna do it. Or you and her are not on the same page and she don't recognize the kind of work it takes to get data that you're saying that you can't give us. Y'all gonna have to get on the same page if I'm gonna support spending any more money in terms of recommendations to this body. I'm just gonna tell you that now. They may choose to do something differently. If I'm gonna support saying, "Hey, yeah, you guys should probably keep spending money here." There's some data that has to be cleared up, there's a communication that has to take place. And I'm gonna need, the next time we meet, you two are gonna have to be on the same page, because right now, you're not. And I've been taking notes, there are other things I have down here, there's notes that you said, but then when I broke, you know I broke them up intentionally, right? I did. All right? So just so you know where I'm going. But I'm, I'm telling you now, just my commission, so we're not gonna get communication because I'm seeing a disconnect here. So I must leave my other comments, because I'm with Commissioner Campbell. I want us to try to figure out a resolution in terms of what my board wants us to go from here and what they want to do. But there are a lot of issues, a lot of questions that I have still, yeah.
Well, um, as we continue, I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you guys surmise, and I'll start out with SBDC. You, you can surmise and then we'll go around for Commissioner comments and closing.
Well, what I can commit to is, um, by Monday hence week, I will email every commissioner on the commission and including the mayor and the MIS mayor.
Can you come to the mic for us?
Sure, thank you, sorry. I took notes on the data that you said, the empirical data that you said would be helpful, that you would require as the commission. And I will go through the data quarter by quarter since 2012 for the city of Palacca as characterized in our management information system. And I will run that data quarter by quarter since 2012.
Up to 2018?
Up to 2018, first quarter. I will run that and I will provide you with information. I will provide you with success stories that were included in the MIS each quarter from the city of Palacca. And I will also come up with a marketing plan that would give you some ideas of what we were thinking for marketing the services of the SBDC in the city of Palacca. And if you had suggestions that could help with that, that would be more than welcome. I could also, um, you know, I'm, I'm kind of taken aback by your comment, Mayor, that the, that Matt, when he was with the city, tried to set up a meeting with me. I have never in my life received any kind of input from Matt requesting a meeting. So maybe it came through a third party or, you know, I don't know. But, you know, I want to tell you, I mean, obviously Cheryl is our feet on the street in the city of Palacca. Cheryl provides the services and, and in my opinion, she does an excellent job of that. But I'm available, I mean, I'm the regional director, I'm in Jacksonville, but I can come anytime you want to meet with me.
That's the reason, that's the reason why this is requested that you be here.
Well, I'm more than happy to be here. I mean, I, I am proud of the SBDC program. I would not have spent thirty-six years of my career with the SBDC if I didn't believe in what we do. And, and, and I'm not willing to stand behind what we do.
And quite frankly, we would not be in a position where we would even make progress today if it wasn't for your presence here today, because we've been stonewalled.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that, Mr. Mayor. And I will make every effort to make amends for that now. I will tell you that what I provide to you, all of the data I provide, you might say, "Well, we really want this or we really want that." If I'm not able to provide it to Commissioner Campbell, you know, his point, I will say, "I can't provide that. It violates our confidentiality or whatever." And then it's your decision to make whether you can live with that data.
I have a question.
Yes.
Based on that, is there a way that we can make the request that everyone that comes through signs that if they desire, is that, I guess, the release to say that they don't mind us getting that information? I mean, because if we're contributing funds to that, we should be able to get to that. And I understand, because my job is grant funded, so I understand there are things that you can and cannot do. But if, if we know there's a way that we can get that information, can we at least make the attempt that everyone who walks through that door say that we waive or we give permission for the city of Palacca? We're not asking for it us individually, but for the city of Palacca being that they are a sponsor, if it gets to the point that we can release, we can release information to the city?
I would think the agency would want that, I mean, would at least want...
But I'm saying, is that something that is done for every person? Like, can we make that recommendation?
Make it a, I mean, a requirement.
I think you did say you have some of that information already, am I right?
Yes, we do, like, if somebody comes in and they start a business or they get a loan or they, you know, whatever, they have some impact, we say, "Would you be willing to be a success story?" Would you be, they gotta, they have some success stories already.
Yeah, it's optional.
The boss probably...
You can't make it, you can't make it.
Can we make it a part of, you know, this information is not, you know, your, what you're doing is very vital to the city of Palacca and we want to make sure that it's known, "Do you mind?" I think it's the way of the acts that could make it a little bit easier and easily obtainable versus, you know, the options, say, "Hey, you know, I mean, can we make it a part of the application process and explain the importance of releasing that information?"
That could help your market too.
Absolutely.
Because people talk to us all the time and we says, "Well, hey, they've done such and such a business, you need to check with them."
But an example, an example though, what would be an example of what you could not do in terms of, um, violating a specific, um, privacy?
We cannot release the names of our clients or workshop attendees.
But we are, you all are allowed to ask for that, right?
Yeah.
Make it optional.
If, if you were a client and you came into our office and, and you were, it was the first time you ever visited and we had our appointment and we talked about whatever your challenges were, your opportunities, whatever, then at the end of that, we could say, "Hey, you know, we're funded by the city of Palacca and would you give a release that we can release your name?" Now, you know...
So that's optional. That could be a part of the process.
What would also help is some definitions. For instance, what do you, what is, what is your requirement for classifying a visit as retaining a job? In other words, you say you, you either created or retained two hundred and two jobs or two hundred and nine or whatever. So what is your criteria for concluding that? Saying that, is it just somebody coming in and having an hour visit with you and you say, "Okay, we retain a job of that, in that, by that visit." Is there some, is there some objective criteria used to say, "We retain a job or we created a job"? Could you at least give us that definition?
Sure.
Cool.
And, um, you know, again, the verification and attribution. When a client comes in and they say, "Well, I was on the verge of closing, but you gave me some good marketing ideas and now I'm doing well." They say in the verification, "I was able to retain two jobs because I stayed in business because you helped me with that."
Yeah.
So that's, that's how that happens.
Okay.
So would you be able to share a redacted form to that effect if they didn't have the information of the, of the person? So let's say you took that, let's say you got that verification form and you, and you redact out the name of the business.
This one.
Do you violate privacy?
I don't know.
And you can cross-reference by number, you can cross-reference by a number.
We share student data all the time without students' names. We analyze data to make informed decisions to help students perform at their fullest academic potential without sharing names.
If you got a database...
And that doesn't violate confidentiality.
I do it all the time.
If you have a database, it has...
I only ask the question because I know the answer.
Okay.
Well, we provide the data that we provide from our MIS, not individual data, but data on our number of clients and our, and our number of business starts and our, all of that information. I mean, that's normally what we provide. And normally, for our partners in other counties and cities, that's what they're looking for. They're not looking for individual, redacted, cross, they're, they trust us enough to think that, you know, we're providing the data from our MIS.
But here's, here's what, here's where I'm at with it. I, I understand how databases work. Now, is it a true relational database? You got a flat, flat file system, what do you use?
I have no idea. I mean, our state office provides our management information system.
Right. But basically, you can, I mean, there, there, there are ways you can just blank out and then use a number, replace it with a number. It's a unique identifier with the columns in there, those are variables. You can not, you don't have to put the name in there, but you've got the client ID. It could be a client ID.
And what kind of information would you get from that?
We, we, it could be everything and we can, we can extrapolate, we can do, I can put, do queries on it. I mean, I can go through the process of pulling information.
It appears if we're consulting them, but I'm, I'm getting lost there right now.
I know, I'm just saying, but it's just, if we just, if we just got the information...
I'm happy to provide the data that we can provide. If that's not what you want, then that's fine.
All right, well...
So where we are.
It's not hard to do.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else from SBDC?
Nope.
Commissioner Moore?
Well, uh, I wholeheartedly support the organization being, for being here, helping the number of people you help in whatever ways you have done so over the years. This is not in a tax session. Basically, it should, it's fiscal accountability. And basically, all we're asking for is simpler, simple reports that can say, "Okay, well, we, we're getting, we're getting the services that we're paying the funds out for, whether it's new businesses created or retaining businesses or creating jobs." But I wholeheartedly support your organization. If we can get those reports, I think that'll, that'll help us out a whole lot. On the accountability side.
Commissioner, Castle?
I think we've shown our support by cutting checks. I appreciate you all coming in here tonight. You said that we'll all get an email on the ninth. You'll receive a follow-up email with me requesting a, a meeting also.
I'll be more than happy to meet you.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
I say it, I mean, I've talked enough, I think they understand how it is.
Um, ask for B. I support, you know, the business. But I think that, um, for me, I would like to possibly explore other options if there are any. If we're paying twenty thousand dollars, um, we're not receiving twenty thousand dollars worth of, um, services. We can create a position here within the city that will give, and we know what we're retaining. So, um, we may want to look at those kind of options as well, um, because that's a job for somebody and somebody can do it. And we, if we can provide another opportunity to employ somebody in the city or multiple people in the city, let's do it that way. or multiple people in the city, let's do it that way.
Mr. Frost.
And in closing, relationships are built on candor. Relationships are built on honesty and respect. And if the lines of communication falter, then it makes it real difficult to continue a relationship. Sat here for almost three and a half years in the same seat and I've only heard county reports until today. And I've asked for city reports consistently. When your county funding got cut and the county has 75,000 citizens, the city of 10,000 stepped up and we still haven't gotten the level of respect or candor necessary to move forward. When that $6,000 check didn't get cut, then all of a sudden, responses came. I asked a question on Friday and I was out of state. Why is it that we can't get certain data? I didn't ask anything about the names of businesses. I didn't ask about any of their loan information. But I asked about data germane to the city of Palatka. And I said, what authority are you citing to tell me that it's a violation of privacy rights? I just happen to have a degree from the Levin College of Law and I've been practicing for 18 years. And the response was the Small Business Administration. And it's that snideness, that shortness, that creates the temperament that you see today from me. The only thing I expect is what's been promised. I think that there's a level of expertise that comes with what Ms. Lynch does. But I also think that there's a level of accountability that needs to be raised. And so, and I stand here again telling you that I've been in business for 18 years. And for three and a half years, I've said that my business has never gotten anything from the Small Business Development Center. I've also said that my new business has not gotten anything. How we communicate this stuff to business owners is the difference in how you help them. And if you can't help people and if you have not created methodologies that allow you to help the masses, then you're only gonna get what you get. And so where I am is, as I share my frustration, I also understand what the priorities are for the city of Palatka. And our business incubator and business creation and making sure that we provide adequate services to those in business districts and being able to build our economy through entrepreneurial spirits is one of the main priorities that we have in place. But I want to build it with partners that want to be partners. And I want to build it with people who at least respect us enough to understand that the 10,000 are spending more than the 75,000 because they care. And because we care, we're trying. Now, $20,000 may not be a lot of money to folks in Jacksonville or some other places, but in Palatka, $20,000 is a lot of money for us. And we're willing to do more if we get more because it benefits the people. It allows us to be fiscally responsible and accountable. But if we don't get what we ask for, then the answer is to put it on the streets and to see if someone else will respect us enough to put it out there or to see if you guys can put a proposal together which will allow us to get the stuff that's there. One reason this thing isn't working is because, because there is no contract. There is no, the expectations are not in writing. And until we can formalize the relationship, that doesn't happen. We can refer to the agreement all day long, but until we can get together and formalize the agreement, it makes no sense because it has no teeth. Right now, all we've got is a gentleman's handshake on how we proceed. And, and the reality is, the way we're proceeding isn't working. And it's very difficult to recommend cutting the check when you haven't gotten the services. So once the services are satisfied and the parties are satisfied, the relationship continues. And if the relationship can't continue with too satisfied a party, the relationship needs to be discontinued.
And I understand that. And I, and I understand your desire for wanting to show the return on investment for your $20,000. I mean, I respect that very much. And if what we are able to provide does not meet your needs, then I would, you know, second what Commissioner Campbell says. You know, you might can do it better yourself or with your own, you know. So, I mean, we will still continue to serve Huddam County because it's one of our 18 counties in the region. So the SBDC will continue to have a, you know, limited role if the partnership does not continue. But, you know, that, I would certainly respect your right to do that. I mean, you know. And I have the copy of the MOU that I sent, which I can send to all the commissioners if you'd like, or I can leave a copy, whatever you'd like. I just, you know, printed it out. This was a copy, this is a copy of the same MOU that was reviewed by the committee and was originally signed by the chamber since 2012, so.
If you give it to the person...
She, she'll make sure it's good.
So again, Ms. Donaldson, thank you for coming.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you for listening to our concerns. Ms. Lynch, thank you for the services that you provided thus far. Mya, thank you for being here. And we thank the commission for having open dialogue. And sometimes open dialogue isn't pretty, but at least it gets us to a point where we've hashed out issues and we can move forward. And so my hope and my desire is that we're able to move forward and that we're able to continually serve people. Because there, there's no doubt that people are being served. But the question is, are they being served at the level that we want them to be served at? And unless you provide, unless you provide us with the information necessary for us to do an analysis as well, we can't answer. So right now, my answer is we don't, we like the information necessary to be able to do a full assessment. And if you can provide that information and give it to the city manager, he can give you the details, what we're requesting. We can formalize that into a written document along with counsel and we can proceed forward and see where we are for the remainder of this year. And we can move and then we can determine what we're gonna do for next year and for the days to come. So again, thank you guys. Hire a certain number of our unemployed youth. Or you agree to hire...